At a point approximately 50 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street and New Lancaster Road, and continuing approximately 150 feet in the southwest direction, National Grid to install two new poles for reliability and solar farm. Anybody here from -- would you like to come to the podium, state your name and address, please?
I'm Lauren Appolitano, 939 Southbridge Street, Worcester. You all always sum everything up. I don't really have to say anything after you all read. After you all read everything. But yes, it's for the solar farm. I guess it's at the Lancaster-Lemonster line. That's one of -- we have two tonight, I believe. So the first one is that.
This is just regarding 220 right now.
I don't know the number on your sheet.
Oh, okay. It's regarding the Willard Street property.
The Willard Street, yep. Mm-hmm. And Brockman Road, I believe.
Now, where -- that's on -- you're going down Willard Street to take a right towards Walmart. It's that large area right on the corner.
I don't know where the Walmart is. Forgive me. I'm not that familiar with Lemonster, but I know it's on Willard Street and New Lancaster Road.
Well, at the intersection of Willard and New Lancaster Road, you would take a right. Walmart's just beyond that.
Okay.
But there's a large lot of land which says here 11 acres.
Yes.
Where are the poles going to go exactly?
The poles are going to go off of the street, it looks like. We do need to replace one pole and install four poles, but those are going to be on the property, not on the road.
Okay, so they're going to be on the private property for the solar farm itself?
Correct. That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And has that already been approved by plan or gone to planning or anyone else yet?
The Lancaster hearing hasn't happened yet, so we're waiting on them, but everything else has been approved by us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Of course.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, that's the public portion that's closed at this point. Are there any councilors that have any questions or comments?
If I may, with all due respect, Madam Chair, with an unrelated National Grid issue, I will not be supporting any National Grid matters that come down here until that issue gets resolved. And that's an issue that we have on Hall Street. It has brought the attention of the management. They contacted. They're aware of it. It's been pretty close to a month now, I believe. No actions have taken place. As a result of that, I don't want to support anything from this point forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll go to my committee members. Councilor Cormier? Councilor Andrew? Okay. I'm going to recommend that we keep the hearing open until we get to vote. I don't think -- I'll ask if there's a time constraint on this.
Um...
I would think not if it hasn't been through planning.
Since we haven't had Lancaster yet, I would say no. I can have Vinnie get back to you guys if you like, though. But I don't think -- I don't believe so, no, ma'am.
Okay, so the recommendation, I believe, is going to be further time tonight.
Of course.
So we'll look at it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Of course. You're welcome.
So the recommendation of the committee is to give further time. Leave the hearing open.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's a public hearing on 3-20, National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways herein named Portland Street, Lemonster, Mass. Did she leave?
No, we're here.
Oh, okay.
Just writing some notes. So yes, that is for an underground development for reliability, to increase their reliability.
Is that on city property or is it on public-private property?
This is on city property.
Okay.
On Portland Street is where we need to replace one pole, so the conduit goes down Portland Street and curves around McIntosh Lane.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in support of this petition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in support? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 3-20? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, the public portion of the hearing is closed. Are there any councilors that have any questions or comments? Councilor Bedanza?
I think the word liability was mentioned. I'm just curious as to whether there's a public safety issue.
Reliability.
Oh, reliability.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, you answer my question.
Sure.
Any other councilors have any questions or comments? All right, I'll go to my committee. My recommendation would be to give it further time as well.
I agree.
Okay. Your recommendation is to leave the hearing open, and we will give it further time. We recommend further time.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing before the City Council of the City of Lemonster. Communication 12, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to consider acquiring by eminent domain permanent and temporary easements on certain properties located adjacent or near the city-owned Twin Cities Rail Trail in connection with the Twin Cities Rail Trail construction project. The properties affected by the taking are identified more particularly in Schedule A of the Order of Taking, by which the city will acquire the easements enclosed herewith and shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Lemonster and Fitchburg, Mass., prepared for City of Lemonster dated August 12, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants." We did have a submission from the mayor with this dated August 7, 2019. I hereby petition the Honorable City Council to consider acquiring by eminent domain permanent and temporary easements on certain properties located adjacent or near the city-owned Twin Cities Rail Trail in connection with the Twin Cities Rail Trail construction project. The properties affected by the taking are identified more particularly in Schedule A of the Order of Taking, by which the city will acquire the easements enclosed herewith and shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Lemonster and Fitchburg, Mass., prepared for City of Lemonster dated August 12, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants." The letter goes on to say, "While the Massachusetts Highway Department will undertake the construction of the Twin Cities Rail Trail project, the city is responsible for acquiring the aforesaid easements that will allow the project to proceed. As you are aware, Phase 1 of the project started with the city's acquisition of the Twin Cities Rail Trail, and will be completed once the city has acquired the foregoing easements. Your attention to this matter is truly appreciated. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella." Mr. President, I would just inquire if it's appropriate for me to read the proposed order of taking now or during the next hearing?
Is it required? No.
No? Okay.
Counsel.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to the chairperson. As I mentioned at our last City Council meeting, I do have an immediate family member who owns land that abuts the rail trail in Phase 2, so I will excuse myself from any conversation and discussion.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay, this is the proposed order of taking. At a regularly convened meeting of the City Council of the City of Lemonster held this blank day of August 2019, it was voted and ordered. The City Council of the City of Lemonster duly elected, qualified, and acting as such on behalf of the city and by virtue of and in accordance with the authority of the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 79, Chapter 82, Sections 21, 24, and 35A as amended, and any and every other power and authority which adheres unto in any way enabling and having complied with the preliminary requirements prescribed by law hereby takes on behalf of the city the following rights and easements. Number one, permanent easements. Permanent easements in, on, and under the parcels of land shown as parcel X E1, parcel X E6, parcel X E7, parcel X E8, parcel X E9, parcel X U10, and parcel X U13, collectively the trail easement premises. On a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Lemonster and Fitchburg, Mass., prepared for City of Lemonster dated July 12, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants, recorded with the Worcester North District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book [blank], page [blank], or recorded herewith the plan for the purpose of undertaking the Twin Cities Rail Trail project," in parentheses, "the project, including without limitation locating, constructing, installing, maintaining, repairing, reconstructing, connecting two adjacent ways and facilities, and forever using and enjoying and allowing for public use and enjoyment thereof, a rail trail and way for pedestrian and non-motorized transportation and recreation, and all uses and improvements incidental and related thereto, including without limitation trails, pathways, ramps, walkways, sidewalks, landscaping, benches, utilities, drainage, fences, signage, and related appurtenances of any suitable material and the right to grade and alter the elevation and contours of the land and to construct slopes. The prohibition of motorized use shall not preclude the use of motorized wheelchairs and similar devices used by handicapped persons, accessed by emergency vehicles, and the right of entry upon and passage over the trail easement premises by the city and/or its agents, employees, contractors, subcontractors, representatives, and/or designees from time to time by foot and motor vehicles, as necessary or convenient for the construction and maintenance of the trail easement premises, and to carry out such other purposes set forth herein." Number two, temporary construction easements. Temporary easements for the purposes of constructing the project and any improvements and appurtenances related thereto, and for all uses incidental thereto, including without limitation, for the purpose of facilitating adjacent construction, reconstruction of roads, sidewalks, paths, driveways, entryways, lights, and signals as necessary or convenient to the project, in, on, and under the parcels of land shown on the plan as parcel X TE6 through and including parcel X TE11, parcel X TE13 through and including parcel X TE17, parcel X TE19 through and including parcel X TE24, parcel X TE26 through and including parcel X TE29, parcel X TE65, parcel X TE66, and parcel X TE69, collectively the temporary easement premises. Said temporary easement shall terminate automatically five years from the date on which this order of taking is recorded with the Worcester North District Registry of Deeds, without the necessity of recording any instrument with said deeds. The trail easement premises and the temporary easement premises, collectively the easement premises, are described more particularly in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein. The city shall have the right of entry upon and passage over said easement premises by foot and motor vehicle, including heavy equipment, from time to time, for all purposes stated herein and uses incidental thereto, and using and temporarily storing as needed construction equipment, materials, or other incidental items necessary or convenient to the proper construction of the project. Included in this taking is the right of the city to trim, cut, fill, and remove any and all trees, underbrush, obstructions, and other vegetation within the limits of the easement premises. The city shall have the right to assign the rights and easements acquired pursuant to this order of taking. No temporary or permanent building, structures, or other objects shall be constructed, installed, or placed upon or within the easement premises. Structures and facilities located within the easement premises that are owned by private utility companies and easements presently encumbering the easement premises, including easements held by private utility companies, are not included in this taking. The easements taken herein do not include the taking of any other structures or objects presently situated within the easement premises, but do include the right of the city to remove such structures or objects located within the easement premises whenever their removal shall be necessary or convenient to exercise the rights taken hereunder. Said easement premises are owned or supposed to be owned and/or formerly owned by the parties listed in Schedule A attached here to and incorporated herein, which parties are here and after collectively referred to as owners. If in any instance the name of any owner is not correctly stated in this order of taking, it is understood that in such instance said parcel of land is owned by an owner or owners unknown to us. The owners who have waived damages are awarded no damages for the herein taking. The amount awarded as damages sustained by the owner or owners of other property are set forth in Schedule B attached here to and incorporated herein, but which shall not be recorded with said deeds. No betterments are to be assessed under this taking and witness whereof. I, the duly elected and qualified president of the City Council of the City of Lemonster, have herein to set my hand this blank day of August 2019. This order of taking is to be signed by City Council President Richard Marshan and to be approved by Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella. Before I open it up to the public, I will go to my committee. Councilor Frida, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
I do. We have planning on having the necessary parties come inside the council to address some questions.
You want to do that?
Yes. Would you want me to do it now or after the public speaks? It's up to you.
Uh, no, we might as well do it now. You guys want to come in?
Mr. Chairman, the police chief was asked to come down to join their team tonight, just so you know as well.
Okay. Chief, do you mind coming in?
He invited me to be outside there.
Could we have Larry Casassa come in as well? Because I have a couple of questions for him, and it'd be easier if he were in here.
Do you want to wait until the public speaks before you ask questions?
That's up to you. We can do that if you want.
Okay.
Then they can answer questions the public may have.
Okay. Councilor Benjana, anything?
I have nothing at this point.
Any other councilor have anything at this point? Okay. Before we get into questions, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Second time, does anyone wish to address the council on behalf of this petition?
Since no one else is standing, Dick O'Brien, 578 Mary Mab. I'm just here to show support for moving this project ahead, to urge the City Council to approve the takings here as a sort of necessary and timely movement of this project forward. I would hate to see us delay it and run the risk of losing federal funds or having to pay back federal funds because the project can't move forward in a timely manner. So I simply urge you to support this petition from the mayor, and let's get the trail built. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Does any other member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this?
Lynda Jean Hall, 435 North Street. I just wanted to come here to support this project and let you know that I'm behind it all the way.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this petition?
I'm Chris O'Gai at 44 Forest Street, and I support the rail trails too.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council in opposition to this petition?
Mary Jean, 40 rural Oaks Way. What a journey we have had to learn the information about this rail trail. And while I am staring to speak in opposition of it today, some majority of the opposition that I first quoted with you people about the businesses being impacted has been now, for what I see, really being looked at and properly addressed. And I had a conference call this morning with four individuals from the state, and I won't linger on it, but I really felt like, for the first time, somebody heard the pain of the businesses. And somebody's looking at what's happening to the abutters, and I am really thankful for that. I think along the way, we might have made a few missteps, but I really feel positive now that everyone's looking at all of the abutters, the businesses as well. And I heard today for the first time that a lot of the businesses that have concerns with the fencing and the cost, that will be seriously looked at, and those fences will be replaced to save those businesses a lot of money. So while I still may have some concerns, a lot of those concerns have been alleviated. And I wanted to be fair to everybody involved. And I did call a lot of you this weekend, and I heard back from a few of you. And I know it was trying to hear what we had to say to you, but if we didn't think it was really needed to be done, we would have never done it. There was a lot of miscommunication, a lot of information that was unknown. And I think we all agree that the unknown is scary to everyone. So I'd like to thank the City Council for the effort some of you have put into it, but I'd also like to say something from the bottom of my heart. Please make sure, if anything ever comes to our city again, that we really look at the contract, we look at the surroundings. Don't listen to just what we heard, but really do some research for the benefit of all of us. And again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your effort. And Rick, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience wish to address the council in opposition to this petition?
Peter Laxus, 22 Demasa Drive. Instead of opposition, I'd like to say concerns. My first thing was traffic, but I'll get into that later. Another concern was businesses and residents. Now, what happened, the first break we had was when council president and Ward 5 counselor opened the meeting so we could talk to the state people and ask back and forth questions. That was really transparent, and it opened the door to two people I talked to on Pre Street. They came here, they were concerned, and Ward 5 counselor went to them, went over their concerns and getting them straightened out. And then he also took care of one on Hamilton Street. So by going out and voicing our concerns, we straightened out those three situations. Tonight, I had -- well, today I had the opportunity through information from the state, I called two large businesses, one large business and a small business owner who's widowed and is on social security, that the fence will be taken down and put up at no cost to her and the business. Absolutely thrilled. This is the way it should work. People should voice their opinion, and just because we're not completely far a project, they should listen to both sides. And this is what we went through, and this is a situation I want to bring to you. Now, the newspaper, the next day after a hearing, they called people that objected momentum killers, the can't-do crowd, a few foot draggers, a few naysayers, and self-interest people. Now, my point is, the newspaper should listen to both sides, because both sides have some questions, and sometimes people say, hey, I didn't realize that could happen. So I'm just saying that I'm glad the Ward 5 counselor helped in that matter, and I'm happy, a lot of conversations with the state, they're looking at this again, and they're going to take their time and try to correct some other things later on. So I hope that works out. Now, as far as traffic, here's what I say about traffic. Engineers are very smart people. They do the best. They look at things and they try to correct things. Now, as far as lights and stop signs and yield signs, they all look at a situation and try to make car traffic safe, and which they do. The point is, we got all kinds of drivers. We got drivers that are on alcohol, they're on drugs, they're distracted. Every day I see them blowing through stop signs, and I'm sure everybody else does too, and stoplights, red lights. They go right through red lights. And the point is, being on the road, you've got to be very cautious. My point is putting bikes on this trail. Now, the reason I say that, I know I've gone to the engineers, I've talked to city people, and I've talked to the state, and they are very concerned and trying to make all these intersections safe for bikes. But as we have bad drivers, we still have people that ride bikes that are bad, and they disregard the law. That's why I have a concern. For many years, I haven't seen many bikes on Route 12, Hamilton Street, and Pre Street, and this and that. I just hope it works out. I know they're doing all they can, but that is a big concern. Believe me, I do not want to ever hit anybody on a bike. And distracted drivers now is one of the biggest traffic accidents going. And you've seen them. They've run over people, they've run over bikes, they've run over motorcycles and everything else. So it's a concern, and I hope I'm wrong. I hope it works out. And I also hope the state has type of rule, when they're doing a rail trail, to look at it really carefully and seeing if this rail trail makes sense. Is it going to be safe? Now, a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of people that go to AIA, and they ride all the way to New Hampshire, New Hampshire, without much crossings. They like the one in Concord. And so this rail trail is not scenic. I'm trying to be honest. We walked it, and a lot of it isn't very scenic, and I feel unsafe. But I'm sure it's going to go through, but I just hope the state looks at it in a different way, other rail trails. And I also want to thank Nikki Peters. She was open and honest. Other people in Lemonster were very honest. The state was very honest with me. We had questions on EPA. They were fully explained to me. This is, the EPA cleared just the first section. So there's another section to look at. Water Tower Plaza is a big one. They're going to be doing a lot of digging at Water Tower Plaza, and we want to follow that and make sure it's going to be safe. I'm sure the EPA is looking at it carefully, and I'm sure it will work. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council? Second time, anyone else in the audience wish to address the council in opposition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council? Seeing none, I'll go back to my committee. Councilor Frida?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Mr. Chair. Is there anyone here from the state that can address some of the... Is there anyone here from the state that can address some of the comments that were just made?
Would it be helpful for everybody to introduce themselves?
Your microphone on.
Oh, sure. Would it be helpful for everybody to introduce themselves here so you guys know who's here and who can speak to what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. All right. Do you guys want to?
Good evening. I'm Lee Smith from KP Law, City Solicitor's Office.
You guys know me, but Nikki Peters, Economic Development.
Joan Roseberry, DPW.
Mike Goldman, Chief of Police.
John Hendrickson from Stan Tech Engineers.
Larry Cash, Mast DOT.
Dan Markey, Mast DOT.
Arthur Frost, Mast DOT.
Larry Casasso with the Twin Cities Trail Association and formerly representing the cities in the negotiations with CSX for the acquisition.
I'm not quite sure who Mr. Latchis was referring to in his comments with the state, but certainly if there were neighbor concerns, and they're going to be addressed, I wish that the city council, through the clerk and the president, would have gotten copies of those letters so that we would know with the complaints that were being made, that they're satisfied according to the people speaking tonight. I haven't received anything. I don't know if anybody else has or if the clerk has.
Caitlin, the mayor had submitted a letter, actually wrote it, with all the different things that we addressed, and we submitted it for the last meeting. So I apologize if that didn't make it to you guys, but we did go through everything except for the most recent ones because that meeting took place today.
The clerk indicated everyone got a copy. I remember reading it.
Okay. So that was everything up until today, and we did meet with the property owner this morning, actually, and had discussions right up to this meeting and plan to update you guys at this meeting about the one that didn't make that letter. So we can do that. It's up to you how we do that.
I've supported this project from day one. I mean, there's never been a question in my mind that this was something good for the city, it was an amenity that we would be proud to have. My concern came when somebody encroachment issues came up because I can remember Kurt getting us sitting here, and I think Pam was at one of the meetings, and clearly stated that CSX is going to take care of the encroachments and the cost of those encroachments. I'm not sure what happened, and I still don't know if we're doing the encroachment, taking or clearing it up, or if CSX is. I'm sure CSX is not because we already own the property. But what fell apart there, and the reason I asked Mr. Casasso to come in, because I understand you were negotiating the purchase and sales with the two, for the two communities. So is there something that broke down in that communication? That's my concern. Not going to change my mind, but it does change the fact that if something changed from the day we voted for the money to buy the trail, the railroad, and negotiate, we were told that that was going to be CSX taking that responsibility, and something changed, we should have been told something changed. That, we all know negotiations break down pretty often when you're trying to deal with different parties. And if they had changed, just tell us. I don't think there are too many that were concerned about it that would take that as offensive because I think we all understand that. So I guess my question, because I just want to know at this point, who, did they deal with the encroachments? If they did not, when did that change on the PNS from the time we were told, from the time that the purchase actually took place? I don't know who wants to answer that, but...
So I just, as I say, I wasn't here at the time, but moving forward, I can assure you that even if it's via the mayor, because obviously, you know, we have to follow the different protocols, if there's changes that happen on any project that I work on moving forward, I can assure you I'll pass that along so that you guys are updated. But I would apologize that nobody did in the past. I would agree with you that that should have probably been communicated. I wasn't here though, so I don't know why it wasn't. And I did look into it. I looked at, I watched the video that you sent me. I talked to Larry, and I also spoke with Kurt. And the way that I understood it was that CSX sent a letter, basically a demand letter to remove the encroachments. And obviously, they, some people did not do that. So then the city followed up, and the wording in the purchase and sale was that the city would notify the encroachers to remove the encroachments. I don't know what transpired, simply because I wasn't here. So hopefully, maybe Larry can speak a little bit more to that, but you can use the microphone.
I think I can speak loudly enough to be heard.
Could you use the microphone, please?
You still have to, for the LTV, please, thank you, sir.
Certainly. It's handheld, you can pull it out.
Yeah, you can take it, yeah.
During the negotiation process...
Go on.
During the negotiation process with CSX, as part of the process of moving the purchase and sale agreement forward, we had a survey done of the land for both cities. And at that time, we identified the encroachments that existed. We felt that CSX had been lax in managing its own property over the years, and we felt that the two cities shouldn't bear the burden of notifying all of the encroachers of the fact that they had been encroaching. So as a condition of the purchase and sale agreement, we informed CSX, and we felt it was their responsibility, since they had allowed these encroachments to occur on their land without any redress, that they send up certified letters to all of those owners informing them of their need to remove the encroachments that existed. They, in turn, once we sent them the information, did in fact send out the letter that we required. I think maybe the misunderstanding here is over whether or not we were going to wait for CSX to take all legal actions necessary and to follow through until every last encroachment was removed. I think we recognized that as a practical matter, to try to do that would have involved potentially months or years before they could have consummated that. But they did fulfill their responsibility to at least let the owners know that they felt that these encroachments had occurred on their land. And I think perhaps during the conversation at that meeting, the impression was given unintentionally that that meant that CSX was in it till the end and every encroachment would be removed, even at their expense if necessary, although there shouldn't have been an expense associated with it because as they have a right as an owner to demand an encroacher to remove an encroachment from their land, other than the legal expenses involved in that. To my knowledge, that's the closest I can give you to what actually transpired, and if we gave a different impression in our explanations at that meeting, I apologize fully for that.
So at any time, was that purchase and sales modified for the city to accept the responsibility to deal with the encroachment?
They were selling us land. The issue of encroachments wasn't part of the purchase and sale agreement. It was part of an agreement during our negotiation that before we executed the purchase and sale agreement, that they would in fact notify all the owners of the encroachments and demand that they remove them. And they did that.
So we, in essence, were buying land with encroachments on them?
Yes, yes.
So that was CSX's response? I mean, I didn't misunderstand anything that night. I listened to it twice, and I looked at two different council meetings because I thought I would have picked up on it. And I'm fully aware of encroachments as an appraiser. I understand what encroachments are. And it was pretty clearly stated by Kurt that it was the responsibility of CSX to deal with the encroachments. To me, that's not a misunderstanding, it's a fact that they're going to deal with the encroachments. And that's how, we could say that I misunderstood it. I don't think I did, but...
It didn't translate that you did.
And I, again, I understand CSX. We've dealt with them before in this city over my 30 years here. So if it was just said to us that we're having difficulty, it's part of the agreement, they're not going to do that, we need to pay now, I don't know that we've approved the funding. We did the other night for some of the easements, but how much is this going to cost in the end? Should have known all of it after we approved the funding to buy the trail, the rail. So that's my own, I just wish there was more conversation back. And I understand Mrs. Peters is in a precarious position because there've been two or three other economic developers before her, and some of the paperwork, when I asked her, she couldn't find. So that's the way we resorted to calling you. So I just wish there had been a little bit more. And I could tell you, for the next phase, I hope we get everything upfront. Something changes, we should be notified right away, so just so you know. And that, I mean, that's, or I'm going to have trouble with the next phase. I mean, I totally support this, and again, I would not have changed my mind if I had known that. But I think to know that would have not have the neighbors stand there and say something that we didn't know. And that just kind of bothered me.
I don't think you misunderstood, Counselor, and I don't mean to imply that at all. I think perhaps because at the time of the presentation, we were working through that process with CSX, that we were perhaps overly optimistic that that was the only action that would need to be taken, that once they ordered the encroachments to be removed, they would in fact be removed. And that, in hindsight, was a naively optimistic assumption on our part that that would occur. But the actual encroachments, to my understanding, are not costing us money. What's costing us money is the taking of easements, if I'm correct, on private land that's not owned. But we're not reimbursing the encroachers for encroaching on our property.
Well, if it has to be some legal issues to follow, it could get expensive, but...
Sure, that's true.
All right. I appreciate you answering that question, and thank you, everyone. I'm not, as I said, I'm not in opposition, but I just think we need to know everything when we're voting on things. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. I'm elevating you. That should be happy.
Anything else?
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
Counsel Bredan, anything?
I don't have any questions.
Does any other member of the council have any questions or comments? Counsel Cormier?
Chief Goldman, one of my concerns was the police department, your position on this and what you expect your department's going to be required to do as far as there's safety concerns, there's patrolling, any of that? Have those concerns been brought to you? Do you have a plan in place?
Well, first, I'll tell you, the police department has little knowledge of the rail trail at all. We're just getting up to speed on it. I don't know that we were involved in any of the planning for the rail trail at all. We always have concerns when something new is put in, something where people are going to be invited. Do we have overwhelming concerns? No, I don't think so. I think that's an area that has always been an unofficial highway anyway between Leamester and Pittsburgh. It's been used for the 32 years that I've been on the department, and I think that cleaning it out and making it easier makes it easier for us to get up there and see what's going on. So we're not unduly concerned.
Any other counselor? Oh, Counsel David Cormier.
Well, I think some of the, you know, some of the concerns were, you know, that you're going to have a lot of signaling that's going to be manually operated by users of the trail. I don't know how true that is, but I have to assume that's how it's going to work. So, you know, what has been done, you know, to sort of look into, you know, potential traffic?
Well, I know that the studies have been done. We have the studies, we've looked at them. I think in actuality, a lot of crossings that needed upgrading for years are going to be upgraded now with better signage, better road markings, and in some cases, modernized walk signals. Is it going to increase some problems? Yeah, probably is going to. I think there was some things in the plan I read today that say that, you know, there's a couple of intersections that are probably going to have longer wait times at them. I mean, that's never good because Leamester's really maxed out for traffic. But I don't, you know, I was listening to Mr. Latchis, and everything he says is true. But again, we're not unduly concerned that, you know, people way smarter than me engineer these things. Particularly the timing of the lights, there were delays put in. We do have a red light problem in Leamester, which we're working on. But again, yeah, there's going to be small problems, without question. Once you invite people there and there's going to be more crossings, I think every council here knows it, not a lot of people cross those crosswalks right now, it really isn't, you know, along that road. So, you know, depending on how many people used, yeah, it's going to increase it, and it's going to impact traffic to some extent. But everything I've seen doesn't say that it's pushing any alarm bells for us.
We do have an engineer and the Masthat, people here who've worked on these projects before who may also be able to answer some of those concerns if you're interested in that. I don't want to overstep.
Not an engineer, so.
Right, no, I'd be curious to hear what they have to say because, you know, I do agree, you know, I've been on the trail that goes from Eire to Nashua, and it is pretty rural. Maybe a couple of few crossings, you know, on more rural roads, not busy, you know, state highways, you know? And I've been on the Middlesex one, I think it's called Middlesex, it goes into Cambridge from, I forget what town, is it Concord area? So, you know, they are a little bit more rural, but once you get into Arlington and stuff like that, it gets busier. So, you know, it's not uncommon to go through busy areas, but like, not like every, you know, some of them, every few hundred feet, you're going to hit a busy intersection, you know?
I think like John, or Larry, or Pam, or Arthur could speak to this probably the best. I don't know, I let them choose who the, or a combination of all you guys, however you want to do it.
Hi, again, John Hendrickson from Stan Tech Engineers. We also designed the Nashville River Rail Trail, so thanks for saying it's a nice trail. There are certain guidelines that Masthat has set and Ashdo has set that we have to meet. And as far as the design of these rail trails, safety is the number one component that we strive for. So each intersection, there'll be pavement marking, stop signs, and when required, signals. So that is our number one goal. We should say, as far as the delays on North Main Street, we did do a traffic study, and as Chief mentioned, there will be delays on the Main Street, on North Main Street. And they vary from zero seconds to three seconds to seven seconds. So delays really are minor when someone pushes a pedestrian signal. I think that's it for the signals.
So there's just one manually operated signal?
Right, at the plaza, we did, because of the volume of traffic, we did add one manual signal at the plaza.
I think people think of these as more recreational, and ours is obviously transportation as a primary use goal and recreation too, but transportation's a big factor. So I didn't know if maybe Pam or Arthur could talk about some of the more urban trails that you guys have experience with, and if they've been a success, or you know where I'm going with this.
I'm Arthur Frost from Mast DOT. So I'll just speak in general. Usually when the rail trail goes in, there's a fair amount of opposition, or you hear a lot of concerns being expressed. And once the trail is in place, it, there's a turnaround, generally much more public support after it's been in place for a while. So is it perfect? John can tell you. We've certainly had our internal discussions. Safety is a big part of it. We don't always agree on the best approach, and usually it's a discussion back and forth and, you know, talking through, it's like any other problem you deal with. There's many different ways to look at it, and there's many different solutions. And what we tried to do was come up with what we felt was the best solution for the location. So there has been a lot of thought that's gone into these trail crossings, and how do we bring people through safely? You know, we can have a trail crossing 300 feet away from a signalized intersection. If we say that we want everybody to go down to that signalized intersection 300 feet away, guess how many people are going to do that? None. So, you know, we, where the crossings were very close to a signalized intersection, then we made them at the signalized intersection. But where we had enough room to safely cross people away from the intersection, and we didn't have to unnecessarily detour people, we chose that route when we felt it was safe. So I think all in all, there's been a lot of thought put into this.
Counsel Marshall?
If I may, Arthur, while you're here, and John, John had the chance to show me the another project taking place by the Department of DOT regarding Water Tower Plaza's redesign of the intersection, which is deemed one of the most dangerous intersections in the state, by the way. How does that play into what's happening with the rail trail? Because rail trail is probably going to be done before, and we want to make sure that whatever's done by the rail trail is not significantly impacted in a negative way once DOT comes in to do the next phase.
Under, what we would like is for the Route 12 project to be overlapping construction with rail trail project, and that the Route 12 project, which is a safety improvement project that covers from Washington Street through Hamilton Street, and that that would do the trail work needed for the trail. We do have contingency plans in the Twin We do have contingency plans in the Twin City Rail Trail Project to cover crossings. My hope is that they won't be constructed under this project, that we keep that money and not spend it there, but spend it in the final configuration. And we'll work hard to come to that, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Chief, if I may, we had a brief conversation regarding safety on the trail itself, and there was, you know, comments were made regarding security cameras, also potentially call boxes. Is this something you might recommend to the city and also to the state, that this is part of the project, where you're not coming back in here for more money later on to try to put this together that's actually part of the design?
I'm a big fan of both. I'm a big fan of cameras, and I'm a big fan of the call boxes. I think you've seen them at the fire stations. I would like to see the city expand that. I certainly would like to see it go down portions of the rail trail. Again, I haven't been involved in a lot of this, so I don't want to speak out of turn.
I respect that.
But I'm a huge fan of cameras. We just put six downtown in Leominster, and it's, you know, the more eyes you have and the more ability you give for people to call for help, the better it is.
Nikki, has this been part of your discussion at all?
Yeah, so I was just lancing over at Larry, the project manager from Masthat, because I think the Rail Trail Association brought up some of those concerns. I think obviously they have more experience with trails and what's worked and what hasn't worked. So I would default to you guys if you, you know, wanted to share anything about, you know, your thoughts on the value or impact of those.
So we found out the history is that all these trails are self-policing, so that there's so many people that will attend them, that everyone has a cell phone. If anything happens, they will be able to call in a problem. And we found out that people that, as you know, there's homeless people down there today, that will all go away with all the use of the trail. So we have not had any trails that I can recall that we put police boxes or cameras. Not saying that it can't be done, but...
I'm not aware of cameras or police boxes.
Right. So that's just, that's just experience.
Where is that one?
Springfield.
Springfield, okay. Have they, do we know if they've needed them?
It hasn't been constructed. We advertised it last year. It's a pedestrian underpass.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, and they did put one up in the Bradford Rail Trail in April. They did put one.
Would you object to us doing that, as a community?
This would be that Masthat's call. Larry can kick me if I'm going off base, but I think at this point, what we would want, probably want to do is probably continue a discussion with the police department and just see, are there critical locations where there is concern? Something like that could be added to Phase Two, but, and then it could be constructed in it. But at this point, we don't have anything planned, so I think we'd want to hear more about, you know, if there's particular areas of concern.
Well, I'm concerned about it.
Okay.
And, you know, unfortunately, this community was very touched with heartbreak with the young lady who was actually murdered in Princeton jogging. And, you know, we don't want to see this happen to some pedestrian who happens to be on a bike by themselves going down the trail at dusk or whatever it happens to be. So the Leominster and Pittsburgh do have a history of drug trafficking and some of these issues, and if the chief agrees to it and works with the Pittsburgh Police Department as well, I think it's something we should address.
Okay.
Thank you. All said, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, procedurally, we're required to have two public hearings, you know, on the same thing. A lack of a better way to put it. So I just ask everyone if they could just remain seated. I don't think the merits are going to overlap too much, but we're all here now.
You're going to close this hearing, Mr. Chairman?
So I'm going to close this hearing now, Mr. President, thank you. This is a public hearing before the Leominster City Council, Communication 13, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to adopt an order of taking by eminent domain permanent and temporary easements in, on, and under the parcels of land shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Leominster and Pittsburgh, Mass, Prepared for City of Leominster, dated August 12, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants, and award damages for said taking to the landowners affected thereby in the amounts set forth in Schedule B enclosed herewith." Before I go to members of the council, I will go to the public. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time?
Peter Latchis, 22 DeMasse Drive. I wasn't going to bring it up because I had the feeling the council was in favor of passing this regardless of how much it cost them. So I didn't bring up the encroachments, but we are on the hook, as far as I know, for the encroachments. It was very clear in June 2016, the state specifically said, "Don't sign the contract, tell the encroachments are cleaned up." One Counselor asked the state again, "Let me make it clear, don't sign the contract until you get the encroachments cleaned." That's a broken contract. In fact, if you turn the contract over, it's dotted as "I," one of the things you had to do. The encroachments had to be picked up by BSX. So I think we're on the hook for encroachments, not a lawyer. And another thing I brought up is that you're going to have more easements and more problems in the next section that you, I think you're prepared to pay for. And so if you're willing to pay, we're paying more money than we should have. And the council seems okay with that, so if that's their position, there's nothing I can do about that. But we shouldn't be paying for encroachments. That was a big mistake, and hopefully there's not too much more money going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latchis. Does anyone else wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition?
Mary Jean, 40 R. Lux. Listen, I just want to straighten out, Peta. It was on the purchase and sales, flipped to the other side of the page, and it's "I," and that's where it says that CSX will resolve the encroachments. I know he was a little confused, but just so everybody gets it straight, it was in the purchase of sales, flipped the page over, it was Section "I." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against?
Linda Jean Hall, 435 North Street. I just want to reiterate my support for this project.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience wish to address the council? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? I'll go to Legal Affairs, Counsel Frida, anything else?
Nope.
Counsel Baddanza?
Yeah. Nikki, maybe you can answer this question. The total cost for the build-out of this rail trail, in terms of acquisition of land, construction, what are we talking about, the budget? Where are we at?
Is it eight now? Are we at, or actually, well, acquisition, two. So the construction... It's a total of two, right?
This is Phase One, the construction, what we need to advertise is $8 million.
And the acquisition of real estate was just over $2 million?
Yeah, it was like 2.8 or something.
Are there any additional costs besides that associated with this?
The easements tonight, obviously. Obviously, legal guidance from KP Law. And then construction costs?
Engineering.
Engineering.
So somewhere between 11 to 12 million dollars or less.
I feel like people have, I think that's about right, no?
I thought once I heard a number of $12 million.
I think that's fair to say, that the design costs are substantial. I don't know, you know, the design costs are substantial for this, which was, I believe, paid for by...
Can we see?
What's that?
EOEA.
EOEA, and so that was not a direct cost to the City of Leominster, and...
The city contribution thus far without figuring out these encroachments is about $464,000.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Any other member of the council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. President, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down tonight. We're going to start the city council meeting, and then we will recess for our public forum. The meeting for August 26 is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Thank you. Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Ottinger?
Present.
Counsel Baddanza?
Present.
Counsel Feckley?
Present.
Counsel Schalafo Zephyr?
Present.
Counsel Nabrowski?
Present.
Counsel Frida?
Present.
All nine members are present. Madam Clerk, is the Chairwoman of Records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of regular city council meetings of July 22, 2019, and August 12 of 2019. I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file. I also have minutes for the special meeting on August 15, and I find them to be in order and also ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any questions on the minutes? So moved. Do I have a motion for recess?
Some motion for recess.
Seconded, thank you. The public forum is now open. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given if necessary. We have two people that signed up. I'm not sure if it was for the public forum in the hearing, but the first one is Crystal. Would you like to speak, Crystal?
Sure.
Again, if you can restate your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Crystal Gaiet, 44 Fourth Street, French Hill. My address is, I want to know if I can start a mass advocate group, self-advocacy group in, at the City Hall. And I know I've spoken to Mayor Maz about it, and he told me I have to address it to you guys. And also, another thing is, every time I'm walking down the street, I am paying attention. Everybody's keeping, kind of zoom at me, and I don't know where they're coming from. And I try to tell that to, like, I told Sue, and she said, "Thank you for telling me. We'll take care of it," because half the time, I'm kind of scared because my provider said, "Watch out where you're going." And I am paying attention. I'm not on my phone or nothing. I'm walking like a civil person, and then I'm afraid sometime I might get hit. And I know all, everyone worries about me in Leominster, and I'm just, that's one of my main concerns. I don't want to get, no one to get hurt like me. So like, if we do have these rail trails, I just don't want some other person to get hurt. I want people to stay off their phones and stay off everything. Thank you.
Chris, thank you very much. We appreciate the comments. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Dick O'Brien, 578 Murray Mavigan. I just want to follow up on Mark's question, which is a very good one. So the project is going to be 11 to 12 million dollars. The city is on the hook for 400-plus, let's call it $500,000. So if you look at the 11 to 12 million dollar cost, the bulk of which is being covered by state and federal funds, and the city is paying roughly 5% of that, I can't see how we can't see that as a positive thing. Getting 95% of a project fees covered and the city paying 5% of it. Even if we pay 10%, 1.1 million or 1.2 million, how many other projects does the city undertake where the costs, 90% of the costs, are covered by other sources of money? I just want to bring that point to your attention, and again, state my support for it. Claire, I agree with you. It would be great if in these kinds of projects, there was complete transparency, that all of the information was upfront. But again, you all have seen a number of projects where these kinds of omissions occur. That doesn't justify it. But I think one way or another, when we look back at this project 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it will far and away be seen as a very positive addition to both the communities of Pittsburgh and Leominster. So again, I urge you to move forward and vote tonight to support the takings of the easement and keep the project moving forward. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Appreciate you coming down. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council?
Hi there, I'll be just very brief. Andrea Freeman, 431 Pleasant Street, along with Dick O'Brien and some other people that have been here tonight. I've been involved in advocating for the rail trail since I moved here first in 2003, and I continue to support it and ask for your vote of support. And I'm so glad that several of you have brought up the concern about bike and pedestrian safety. This is the specific reason, the reason why I have been advocating for this rail trail for so long, and the reason why I frequented scores of rail trails around the country, is because they are so much safer than walking or biking on the road or even regular sidewalks. Leominster, I find to be one of the most unpedestrian-friendly cities in the state, and I travel a great deal around the state. One of my, about three weeks ago, one of my neighbors was struck and very seriously injured. She's in the hospital, at least, I think she's actually still in the hospital. She was struck by a vehicle on Union Street, by Union and Sylvan. And, yeah, that's my biggest fear as well. My parents won't walk in my neighborhood, they won't cross the street. So I'm so glad, and when we, hopefully, there will be a great vote, a vote tonight to move the project forward. And afterwards, I would love to work with any and all of you. Counsel Baddanza has been really helpful and supportive in my concerns and our ward, but I would love to work with any and all of you and to make this a much safer walking and biking city, because statistically, more people are killed and seriously injured by vehicles than they are from an individual person harming or killing them. And if we look at the numbers, that's what we need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Council's back in session. We'll begin with communications from the mayor.
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Joanne C. Dionfro, pardon me, Donfro, to Library Board of Trustees, term to expire 4/15/2022.
The appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, and I would ask the city clerk to have Ms. Johnfro invited for an interview to the next meeting, and if we could have her resume, and if I have one, I apologize, but I don't see it here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Regular course on the appointment. We now move on to communications, beginning with Communication 17.
C17. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Diana Richard be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Conflict of Interest.
Communication 17 again is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course on Communication 17. We now move on to Communication 18.
C18. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Cheryl Canado be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Conflict of Interest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course on communication 18. We now have orders before the council, beginning with communication 19.
C-19. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $64,131 be made to the school transportation expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 19 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication 19. Communication 20.
C-20. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $60,105 be made to the school department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 20, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication 20. C-21.
C-21. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $30,000 be made to the school department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 21, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, same situation, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication 21. C-22.
C-22. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $230,700 be made to the sidewalk expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 22, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on C-22. We now move on to matters before the city council, beginning with the financial report. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1st, 2019, with a balance in our stabilization account of $19,890,850. To date, we have pending before us or approved $1,906,36 in appropriations, leaving a balance of $17,984,814 in the stabilization fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to communication 15. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-15. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $570,964 be made to the school department expense account, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. You may recall that we passed, at the time of the budget, an appropriation to the school expense account, the amount of $400,000, to be funded either as a result of state aid or fiscal 2020 revenue. The delta between the governor's budget and the legislature's budget for Leominster in terms of school state aid was $970,964. Fortunately for us and the schools, the legislature budget was ultimately adopted. So this $570,964 represents the difference between what we appropriated, and that $970,964 of additional school aid are good happening for us, to be sure. Would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-15. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. Unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation right to grant communication 15. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to nothing. Communication 15's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $570,964 be appropriated to the school department expense account, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the counsel served the recommendation right. Are there any comments or questions on the recommendation? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate by saying yea. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to communication 16. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-16. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that appropriation of $100,000 be made to the Gallagher Building expense account, same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. As we know, there are some rents paid on the Gallagher Building. Those rents are deposited into the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. From time to time, we need to transfer money from the revolving fund to the operating account to cover our expenses of upkeep of the building. That is typically done in $100,000 increments, as we have before us this evening. I asked the comptroller to update us with respect to what the balance of the revolving fund was. As you'll see at the bottom of your financial report, the current balance as of 8/21/19 in the revolving fund is $1,304,100, which would be used, again, for continuing operations when needed and also capital updates when those come about. Mr. President, would be my recommendation to grant C-16. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. Unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-16.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation to grant communication 16. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $100,000 be appropriated to the Gallagher Building expense account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the counsel served that recommendation right. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to communication 10. Are you ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. Communication 10. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the Cross Connection Control Ordinance, Chapter 17, Section 1718, be updated per the attached document. The adoption of this updated ordinance will help the safety preservation of the water quality within the city of Leominster Water Distribution System, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works. I personally support this. We are, however, awaiting referrals from the DPW and the Health Department. So my recommendation, given that, would be further. We do have those? No, we don't.
No. You sure? Okay.
No. My recommendation would be further time.
Okay. Councilor Frida?
I agree. I think we could probably approve it, but we'll go further time.
Councilor Bonanza?
I'll see to the Chairman's request.
Okay. Unanimous recommendation is further time for communication 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation right for further time on communication 10. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We now move to communication 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. Communication 12. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for one second. Counselor?
Yeah, thank you very much to the Chair, to the Chairperson. I will be abstaining from C-12 and C-13 due to a conflict.
So C-12, C-13 duly noted. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Communication 12. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to consider acquiring by eminent domain, permanent and temporary easements on certain properties located adjacent or near the city-owned Twin Cities Rail Trail in connection with the Twin Cities Rail Trail construction project. The properties affected by the taking are identified more particularly in Schedule A of the Order of Taking, by which the city will acquire the easements enclosed herewith and shown on a plan entitled Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Leominster and Fitchburg, Mass., prepared for City of Leominster, dated August 12th, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants. My position is to grant communication 12. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. The third member?
I agree as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant communication 12.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant communication 12. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? You have the floor to Counselor Bonanza.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a long and rather arduous process. There are so many layers to this project, federal, state, local, and all the private interests that have been involved. I really candidly applaud everybody that's been engaged in this process. And I know it's been difficult for a number of people, especially people who have vested interests with respect to properties along this trail. As I indicated through my question, and as Mr. O'Brien also underscored, this is a $12 million project. The city thus far has contributed $464,000 to the project, which is less than 4% of the total amount of money involved here. I think the Counselor at large's point about the encroachments was one well-taken, and it's one that's instructive for the future. However, even if it cost us $100,000, and I hope it doesn't, by the way, that would still only increase our contribution to this project by nine tenths of 1%. It is an incredible amount of money that we've leveraged for our city through the efforts of a lot of people. I see this as a very beneficial project, not only for recreation but for transportation, and also a lot of businesses, I believe, will be favorably impacted as a result of the cultural and economic developments associated with it. I think it hasn't always been smooth. It's been some bumps along the road. I've participated in some of the attempts at solutions. I've seen the state officials and the local officials and the federal officials work very hard to address some of these problems. Many of them have worked out after some hard effort, and that's a great thing to see. So I think, is it perfect? No, the process wasn't perfect, but I'll tell you, the complexity involved in it, I am really kind of proud of everything that the city has done. I see this overall, the vast majority of this whole situation is extremely positive. And it would be my pleasure to vote in favor of this this evening.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant communication 12. Again, are there any further comments or questions? Counselor Frida?
I certainly support this as well, and I have, as I said earlier, from day one. But it's extremely frustrating to be excited about something and get to the end finish line and find out there are things you didn't know as we went along. Should we have known them? I think so. Would it have changed my mind? No, but we'd know it was going to cost us another 50, 80, $100,000, and it would have been a little bit better. I'm not looking to take anything away from the importance of this rail trail or how much it adds to our community. I certainly support all of that. But I really, to answer the public comment, we should learn from this. I mean, we should, we should, from now on, know what we're talking about when we're voting. We vote for X amount of dollars. It changes, but we've already voted for the money, so now we get in a position where if it were to be too expensive, we can't pull back because we'd lose the initial money that we've put in. So I hope that it does change something a little bit. But again, I absolutely support this, and I know everybody's worked hard, and it's been a long process. And questions I've had along the way, people have answered. Questions that came up from the public hearings. It's been really receptive in terms of dealing with some of the abutters that had some issues, and they were resolved. So it has been, and I do know that a lot of people worked hard, and I appreciate all that as well. So I intend to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Ottinger?
I've been relatively quiet on this issue, but, you know, just as someone who rides rails, trails in a normal course of life, I just hope it's done before I am too old to ride on it. So that's my comment. Well, supported 100%.
We're going to find some three-wheels if we have to.
Okay. Thank you.
That's not a problem. Dick O'Brien's going to push the both of us. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Before we cast a vote, pardon me, but I'd like to just make a comment. I just want to give tremendous kudos to Nikki Peters, who really walked into this after it had been started, and a lot of the things had already been in place, and picking up that puzzle and putting it back together. All the stakeholders in the room that have been here, the Rail Trail Association, Dick, you and your staff, everyone here from the state has been great. John Roseberry's always had an open door for us to just walk in and check things out down with the engineering plans in earth. And so it's really a tremendous effort on behalf of all of you involved in advocating for this. So I deeply appreciate it. I look forward to the tiny little problem solver we may have to do down the road to make it as safe as we can, but for the enjoyment of not only the city of Leominster, but again, our Twin City as well. So congratulations, Nikki. Thank you. This will be a roll call vote. Next job. Counselor Bonanza?
Yeah, I just wanted to add real quickly, Mr. President, that's a great point. Nikki Peters really has been the quarterback of this project, and I think she has done human work with respect to getting this all coordinated. And I want to echo your comments. I think we owe her a debt of gratitude.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other closing comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida.
I love it how every controversial vote starts with me.
That's because you're the best.
Good job.
You're our leader.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier? I shall recorde as yea, by a vote of 8 to nothing, is granted. Thank you all very much. Good job. Okay. We now move on to communication 13. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 13. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to adopt an order of taking, taking by eminent domain, permanent and temporary easements in, on, and under the parcels of land shown on a plan entitled Easement Plan of Land, Twin Cities Rail Trail, Leominster and Fitchburg, Mass., prepared for City of Leominster, dated August 12th, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants, and award damages for said taking to the landowners affected thereby in the amounts set forth in Schedule B enclosed herewith. My recommendation is to grant communication 13. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I agree as well.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant communication 13.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant communication 13. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, again, this will be a roll call vote, this time beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
I shall recorde as yea, by a vote of 8 to nothing, communication 13 has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to public service, beginning with 2-20. Is the Chairman ready to report? Chairwoman ready to report, I'm sorry.
I am, Mr. President. 2-20. National Grid and Verizon, New England Incorporated, to install two jointly owned poles on Willard Street at a point approximately 50 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street, the new Lancaster Road, and continuing approximately 150 feet in the southwest direction. National Grid to install two new poles for reliability and solar farm. We had a public hearing tonight, and we heard some concerns. I'm not so sure that we can hold up one project because of another, but out of respect for the President, I'm going to recommend further time and go to my committee on that.
You have the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I agree.
Thank you. Madam Chair, please requalify.
The recommendation unanimously is for further time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right for further time on 2-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor David Cormier?
As usual, I will be abstaining. This piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer, so I have to abstain.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Duly noted. Any other comments or questions on the floor? All those in favor of further time for 2-20, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 8 to nothing, 2-20's been given further time. Thank you. We now move on to 3-20. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 3-20. National Grid, to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way of ways herein named Portland Street, Leominster, Mass. Again, same as the preceding petition. I do recommend further time due to some questions that we need to get answered.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right for further time on 3-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? Counselor Cormier abstaining from that.
That's just owned by National Grid, so I can vote for that one.
Just double checking for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
By a vote of 9 to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We now move on to Ways and Means. Under suspension of the rules, we have an emergency preamble that needs to be ratified. Communication 9. Is the Chairwoman ready to report? Communication nine, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. C oh nine, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Authorized the City of Leominster to pursue twenty-five thousand one hundred and ninety dollars through the United States Department of Justice, Justice Assistant Grant Program. This was approved at the City Council meeting on a suspension of rules and emergency preamble of eight twelve, and then needs to be ratified at this meeting. This is something that we do basically every year. In particular, this year, this amount of money, the Leominster Police Department intends to utilize this funding to support continued community policing efforts and equipment purchases. So my recommendation would be that C oh nine be ratified by the Council tonight.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation for ratification on Communication nine. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, ratification is taking place. Thank you. We now move on to Communication eleven. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C eleven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the list of election officers for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty be appointed. This was given regular course at the last meeting. My recommendation would be that we appoint the persons that the mayor has requested for the upcoming election. And I should go to my committee.
Thank you. Counsel Freedom?
I agree.
Thank you. Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
We have unanimous recommendation to appoint the list of election officers for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation right to appoint the election offices of Communication eleven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Let's do a roll call vote with this, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Odenger.
Yea.
Counsel Budanza.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Schelfel Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Freedom.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Confirmation is taking place. Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee. We have nothing on the new business. Okay, we now move on to old, I'm sorry, Counsel Freedom?
I know the Counsel next to me requested the police chief to come in at some point to talk about the homeless issue.
Yes.
At the same time, could we add, bringing up the constable appointments? I mean, it seems to be pretty controversial throughout the state right now on constable duties. And do we, I haven't seen a constable appointment come down here. I don't know if we're supposed to confirm those appointments. No?
Not by law, no.
Okay. All right.
Great question, though.
Some communities have to confirm, so that's why it was one of my questions. But we could just get an idea what our constables do do, what their authority is.
Okay. All right. If I may, I think Counsel Dombrowski, you requested the police chief to come down on that matter.
Yes.
Okay, so some, with the busy calendar tonight, weren't able to address that?
Right, no, I understand.
Okay, so I had a conversation with him about that before the meeting, but we would still ask him to come down at his convenience.
Yes.
Okay? All right, thank you. Any other, any other items on the new business? Okay, good. We'll move on to old business. We have a second reading of the ordinance, petition sixty-one dash nineteen. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition sixty-one nineteen. This is a second reading of an ordinance. Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the City Council amend the city ordinances to reclassify the position of water specialist into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from an S five to an S seven. My position is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the Clerk.
I support that.
Thank you. Third member?
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation right for the adoption of petition sixty-one dash nineteen, second reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Freedom?
Again, I'd just like to commend Ray Racine. This is something that's going to be pretty important with the MS four permitting, and